Well, good evening, everyone. Today is the regular meeting for the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation. This is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. We do have, I believe we have a quorum here with Arnett and Carol and Dan and myself. So, we will get this meeting started. Are we good to go, Mr. City Administrator? Okay, here we go. All right, so first thing to do is we're going to call a meeting to order and then we will get our pledge of allegiances. Let's... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one city, under God, one indivisible. Okay. We are open to public forum. Is there anybody that signed up to speak with us today? Okay, so then we will move on to... We're going to convene... Let's start with the item number one. Well, it's actually item number three on the agenda. We'd like to convene into a public hearing on a project to fund the design fabrication installation of the wayfinding signage within the city of Montgomery. This is for our public hearing. Is there anyone here that, Ms. Tilly, you don't want to speak? No? Okay. I was just checking.
No, this is just the...
From our...
...we have to go through.
Okay.
There's a couple other little points in here.
Okay, okay. So, nothing really, nobody here to say, "Don't do it," or anything? Okay.
You open it at a certain time and you close it at a certain...
So, we just leave it open, then?
No.
And we officially open it at 6:01?
Okay, I'm sorry. This is the first time we've done this. Yeah, four years I've never done that, okay. So, we officially opened it at 6:01 tonight and since there are nobody, no discussion, we will close it at 6:02. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arnett. You're entertaining, Arnett.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll pop over here to the item number four. This is consideration and possible action on the regular meeting minutes for September 16th, 2025. Are there any comments? I will make a note that Ryan Landin has showed up, so he is now here.
Hey, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan, for being here. I like your new hairdo, too, Ryan.
Thank you, my wife did it.
Really? Good to go into mine. Okay, so, do we have a motion to accept those meeting minutes? Is there any discussion, nobody?
I make a motion, we receive the actions on regular meeting, September 16th, 2025.
So, it's been motion and seconded that we approve the minute... Meeting minutes for September 16th, 2025. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, the ayes, ayes. That motion is passed. All right, moving forward, we have consideration and possible action on the recommendation of Dan Walker, Casey Olson, Wade Nelson to be recommended for reappointment or to serve in two-year terms for their office that would expire December 31st, 2027. In other words, Dan, Casey, and Wade are up for either renewal or replacement. I guess we have two of the guys here. Any thoughts?
I'm in.
Dan says he's in.
I'm not up in...
No, he's not a...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan's not up. So, Wade and Casey. I don't know why. I know I had three.
But I did just happen to speak with Wade and he said he still wanted to be, and then he said he wasn't getting the emails, so we need to check on that.
Does he have his computer?
Well, he wasn't here when we passed the computers out.
Yeah. That would make a difference. I had the old one, too, and never got some.
What about Casey? Does anybody know his...
Yeah, he's good.
He's good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so really Wade's the only kind of not for 100% sure, or...
Not aware.
He said he wants to... He just said he hasn't... I asked him if he was going to come to the meeting. He didn't know whether they were, because he didn't have the computer. Didn't get the email.
I appoint Wade.
Oh, so you're...
Yeah. Especially when you're not here. He's also committed...
We didn't get any applications or anything, right?
Okay, we should put him in every chairman duty, then. Let's load him up, you know, if we want to have some fun with it. All right, so is there anything, Brent, that we need to do besides just say that everybody's good to go? Okay, all right. Okay, then we'll...
You get to make a motion.
We do need to make a motion. Okay, so the staff would need to make a motion to recommend Dan, Casey, and Wade for re... You make it?
I wouldn't make that motion.
Okay.
Number... To approve number five as presented.
Okay, so it's been... It's been... Who's seconded it? Okay, so it's been motion and seconded that we approve item number five, which is as presented, the consideration of possible action and the recommendation of Dan Walker, Casey Olson, and Wade Nelson to be recommended for reappointment to serve in a two-year term of office on the EDC board that expires December 31st, 2027. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries and we look forward to seeing your beautiful faces again. All right. Next, we have item number six. This is consideration of possible action on a resolution of the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation approving a project and an expenditure not to exceed $850,000 for the design fabrication installation of wayfinding signs. I believe we have already crossed this bridge. So, we're just at the point where we need to make the recommendation to send this to council to get final approval. So, if we could get a motion for that, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion. We... I just have a question.
Oh, wait, we have a question.
Maybe I missed the last one, but do we not have a bid?
Yeah, we did. We had three bids come in.
Okay, I read the lowest bid.
We chose... We chose...
We chose...
Yeah, okay. It wasn't really clear.
It's a little more on the... In the minutes, if you look at it, you'll see we thoroughly debated it and then...
I'll choose one better. When we get a little further along with them, we're going back over everything with them. We're looking at, we'll bring it back to you so you can look at it again and look at all the signs.
There was a few things that needed to be tidied up on there. Ms. Tilly was good about pointing those things out, but it's pretty much good to go. And Ms. Tilly did all the heavy lifting on that, by the way. She was awesome, as you know.
We're not... Don wouldn't have to be lifting, but just...
Did a great job though finding us the right vendor, so we're excited about that. So, I guess it's okay to go ahead and accept that motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second... Dan.
Oh, Dan made the motion to...
Previously discussed and written.
Yeah.
Exceeds all amount.
And it was seconded by Carol? Okay, so it's been motion and seconded. The staff approved the resolution for the project of an expenditure not to exceed $850,000 for the design fabrication installation of the wayfinding signs. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Aye? As opposed? That motion passes. The resolution will be signed and we'll send that to council for final approval. Give me just a second to... Okay, so the next one kind of goes in line with that. The next item is consideration of possible action, item number seven. Consideration of possible action authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with the selected signed contractor, LED Partners, for signage-related services contingent upon city council approval and the associated expenditure. So, we would need a motion to approve that expenditure?
I make a motion...
I mean, sorry, to approve that, signing the contract.
I make a motion that we approve authorization for city administrator to sign a contract with the select signed contractor, LED Partners, for signage-related service contingent upon city council approving associated expenditures.
Second? Seconding it? Okay, so it's been a motion and seconded that we approve the city administrator to sign a contract with the selected signed contractor, LED Partners, for signage-related services contingent upon city council approval of the associated expenditure on November 10th. It's amendable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion passes as well.
We have a 60-day... We posted in the newspapers, that was the other part of it, and then it'll go to council the next meeting and they'll have an approval and reading, and then when we hit the 60 days, we'll initiate the project.
So, 60 days from...
It'll be November... November 28th, I believe.
Okay.
That'll be the end of the 60 days.
Okay, good. Okay. So, we should... We started around the first of the year, first part of the year, you think? Hopefully, God will. Okay. Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number eight. That's a presentation discussion regarding the revised scope of work for the downtown streetscape project. And I believe we're going to... Okay, so we'll just turn the floor over to you.
Good evening. So, the next three items are kind of all intended. So, what I want to push you all right now is regarding the revised scope. So, first, state of direction. We included some of the components, side of the building. On that exhibit, we will see... The dedicated exhibit, you'll see two different hatches or three types. Two different hatches. One means red, which will include the original scope of the downtown streetscape that are very chemically horned around. And then two, the added purple patch for the community center. This portion of the project has an added path direction, that's what we've got to be included in our scope of the design. We'll include the downtown streetscape. Essentially, what's happening is with the improvements being proposed to the community building, wanting to tackle overall site improvements to a set community building to make it all kind of once in this project, especially for the paving portion, any improvements to the parking lot on the community building while trying to make in the same project, same contract. Cutting once, might as well cut all the things that are cutting the price. And so, you see also in that package that I handed out, a kind of conceptual marker of some of the improvements to these community buildings. Even maybe with a landscape architect to kind of walk through official improvements to the building and site. So, you kind of see various components of the site design, all of which are not to catch out, but just kind of based on some direction that we can proceed from. State of... Obviously, before we move any further with the public design or site layout, I would provide y'all would be beneficial to kind of hammer it out as to what we want to do with the community building.
Has there been any discussion about that, Brent, as far as what to do with the community building? Are you talking complete, raise it and go start from scratch, or...
Well, I'm going to bring options to the city council on exactly what we want to do, so they'll kind of decide on that. They haven't seen this yet, either.
Yeah.
This is just a rough idea. We have... This has evolved a little bit over time. We're kind of... We're trying to get the hardscape part of it kind of lined out so we know how the flow goes. But the community building itself, we're also getting some prices for the interior renovation. There were some issues in there, ceilings coming down, there's some mold in there. If we keep the building, I'm pricing that out to, you know, what a full renovation will cost. So, this will probably end up being a EDC-city combination, something, you know. Of course, we're going to bring this up to you guys. Just participate... This is just getting this started. Talks about our bureau contract, you know, I mean, that started way back when Gunda started. We're trying to get it fast-tracked and moving forward again.
Gotcha. So...
Especially with the paving part of it.
So, this would... Just so that we're clear, this would replace the McAllen Street project altogether, or just a portion of it?
It doesn't replace that. It just moves the more aesthetic design towards the community center rather than in the middle of a house.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so...
Which this whole property here is owned by the city already, so we don't have to get involved with private structures, private easements, any of that that was in the...
Which were creating some problems for us before.
Exactly. Trying to get agreement with all those people.
Businesses, yeah.
This way, we get the road paved, we get the improvements, we get the sidewalk, and we do things here that will make this community center kind of the center of the downtown.
And it's out of the way of these businesses doing business.
That's the hope, you know? I mean, if they got so big, you still might have to go out into college and...
Yeah.
But it's still not right in front of their front door.
Gotcha.
That's the idea.
Okay.
So, what would be the potential price increase for the project at that?
I'm hoping that this is going to still be...
This is about what?
Now, if you start adding the community center, remodeling some of these other things, because as you see here, we have conceptually put a stage on one side or the other. We talked about both.
Yeah.
Talked about a stage facing towards McAllen because, you know, the street dance. So, we just got to get all that hammered out before. But I'm hoping that the hardscape part of it and the paving, the water, and the storm drainage all still comes in under what we originally built. Because we're just kind of moving the hardscape that was in the middle of McAllen to this area.
So, if you remember back in May, I believe, presented kind of an update as to where we stood in terms of pricing and everything, with Brent's suggestions, with Kenley Horn and our bureau were proposing in the streetscape project, it was around $1.6 million. $290,000 of that was the raised decks and the hardscape in the center.
Okay.
That's a pretty thing that's added back into the budget.
Okay.
Added to community building improvements.
Okay. And like Brent said, the city council will probably be participating somewhat in this, I would imagine, right?
Well, I would think that with the... The community center building, that could be...
Probably there's more under their scope.
That's probably... There's mold in there, so that's a safety issue, too. That thing's got to be gutted or brought down, so...
Yeah, and actually, the mold issue was not critical. It's just enough that we need to probably take care of it, or by the time you take care of it, you've already got it.
Yeah. It's 6:01, half a dozen, you might as well go ahead and mute it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, keep going, sorry.
So, and the heart, and maybe you're going to say this, sorry. But this way, we can get the hardscape, the road, and all that out to bid, so we know what we're really going to pack.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to get with him and the next item we'll see.
Okay.
So, the power... Provide power boundary, original scope versus what we're changing, and reducing it to right away from the highway. The power building is having to be... The meeting agreed to giving those agreements executed and provided to the city. Kind of talk about impact on budget, timeline. This will kind of get into the next item, which I'll be able to talk upon as well with the city staff. But timeline is to be determined, obviously, with the understanding of the components of community building. Not to 100% straighten out. There are some unknowns that we are pursuing. But again, with the next item, the following item, kind of just...
We could probably get... We can get started on working through those, then.
Exactly.
Would McAllen remain a two-way street?
So, as we've been discussing kind of throughout this whole process since we started getting involved with the streetscape project, it has been determined that going more homely would be more advantageous with potential future accommodations for the Mason going south. So, the neighboring street were dropped away.
Okay. Gotcha, okay. I was just curious. Ryan, anything to add, or... I know you're good at seeing these things.
Absorbing it.
Just kind of taking it all in? Okay, is that all that we need to do for this particular point, or did you have more to add? No? Okay.
Some of the galon part of the McAllen street part of it, we still are looking at...
Paving.
Streetlights and some of the aesthetic things that'll be in there.
Yeah.
That'll be part of what we...
Okay.
We're also looking at streetlights on 149. We're kind of trying to tie all this together so they're all the same. So, we'll bring that to you. We're just at the beginning stage. This is very early.
Yeah, I'm grateful.
We're going to ask for a meeting in November, a special meeting, to actually present more concepts.
Okay. Well, I'm grateful that you were able to pull this off this quick, to be honest with you. Because, see, we just talked about it, and next thing you know, you've got a whole full-blown design. I mean, I know... I know, I thank you. I know it's early, but it's nice to see that we're moving along at such rapid rate. Because we're ready, you know? We're ready to move. Okay, well, that just leads us... You might want to stay up there, right? Okay. That just leads us to the next item, which is... Is there any other discussion on that, by the way? I don't want to close it out without making sure.
So, the city's going to look at this, too, or like what? Like, I don't know. I don't have enough experience with the community center, with all that goes on there. Is there someone vetting all this, that all the different events we have still functioning in the site and all that kind of stuff? I'm assuming that's the case.
Yeah, right now, it's still functioning. We're still renting it out. We had the test run, everything's not dangerous to anybody. But the city council will have to direct me on what we're going to do. I'm getting the pricing for the remodel. And the decision, you know? There were some options. Some people said just tear it down and start over. Most people want to keep it, make it kind of a centerpiece to add, you know, outdoor part of this. I'll bring all that to you when we get...
So, I'm just wondering, like, what are the next steps with this? This is preliminary, but we need to have like a roundtable or something and plan it out. Do you want to...
November, we're going to do a special session.
In November?
Yes. Yeah, that'll be more detailed than...
So, Jeff, I have some questions, suggestions. Now, when this project start to transpire, people going to be displaced from having events. Now, you've got a maven facility next door to it.
Oh, yeah?
Housewives lot. So, I mean...
No, yeah.
How would you... Would you direct them to that? Would you and the city?
Sure.
Make some type of agreement? I mean, I don't know if you...
What are you talking about? For events that we're getting displaced from?
Yeah.
Sure, we can... I'm sure we can accommodate as long as we don't have something booked.
Well, we don't have to do it for free, Jeff, okay?
What else is there?
Well, what I'm saying is that I'm sure that you still...
No, no, I mean, I'm not...
They're still willing to pay the same real fee.
Right. You know? Is that the only other place that we...
Yeah, you. You, you the only one.
Okay.
I know that the county wouldn't... Wouldn't book it with the city.
Yeah.
No, that's... They don't be asking too much, so...
So, he didn't want...
So, that's something we need to think about even so.
What's with the community?
Yeah, we've been thinking about it, and actually, the... I've gone through our purchase cooperatives like we did on some other projects. And so, it's kind of like a pre-bid on this. I won't even have to go through that. And depending on what the council tells me, of course, it could be a six to eight-week project where they got it and fix it all back up, so it's really not too long.
Well, if it's more remediation, is that takes a while?
That part of it, yeah. But that's mostly just the ceiling tiles and stuff, so...
You just take those out. Yeah, okay, yeah. But to answer your question, I'm... You know me, I'm willing to help out in any way. Doesn't matter. I mean, I'm open to whatever you guys decide. Okay, so...
I just held me a place up to the front, but I'm sorry.
It's not far. It's not far from there, though. You're right about that. Okay. Yeah, we love having people. Okay, so, Ryan, any other questions regarding that project? We'll have another meeting, a special session, November, and we get to our quarterly after that.
Yeah, and this is for you guys to have ideas, too. This is not just...
It's just a...
Or just a starting point for what we can, you know, imagine.
Yeah, we need those workshops, that roundtables, to really start to develop the ideas that each... I'm sure there's a lot of wealth knowledge around here that we can...
Yes, and we also want to have meetings with the downtown people.
Right.
Because they need to know what's going to happen when we start paving, start doing all these things, and...
Get some of their input. Okay, all right. Okay, well, then we'll jump over here to, I believe it is, item number nine. And this is consideration of possible action regarding the termination of a bureau-kenley-horn contract. Brent, would you explain? Because you and I have talked about this, but would you explain to them what's going on with that and why we really don't need that anymore?
Well, originally, this started with Gunda, and it goes back four years, even a little more. And Gunda was originally brought in under a different group here at the EDC. And I can understand the ideas. I pulled all the emails, I went back and did the research, what happened. Well, then Gunda was purchased by Adura, and Adura brought in carefully, and really, you know, four years, nothing's happened. I'm not saying it's their fault or whatever, but with your direction, that you want to get this done, to get this going, I believe the easiest way is to work with our own people. They know the project. They were going to do the water and the storm sewers as it was. By moving this more towards a community center, it's really a simple paving for the most part. They've already got all the other parts of it. So, my recommendation is, you know, to cut the losses.
Quit spending money on a company we don't need, kind of thing?
My recommendation, I don't want to say anything bad about those guys.
Oh, no, those guys were great.
I don't... I don't know the work with them. I'm just saying, we can work with these guys every day. We have great communication. We want to get the project done. It would be a lot easier for me and the staff to work with them, and they have a good job, a little, I don't know.
Well, you know, the scope of the project has changed.
Yeah, and that fed into it, that's why...
Really no need for all that extra infrastructure and things that we talked about, so...
Right.
Okay, so then, then we...
Go ahead. Y'all have an architect.
They do. This is who drew up this kind of beginning here, for example.
Yeah, so we have a landscape architect that's currently preparing a proposal for the work. They did this mock-up as kind of an advertisement of their services. So, we're going to be some proposals, we have to put the lighting, setting, all in common. And then we all... We do this a lot, a lot, many utilities.
So, we're going with Buxton based off of y'all's recommendation?
Yes.
Is that... Can we do that?
What are you saying?
Can we... Can we hire professional services?
So, they're used to us.
Okay, we're selecting you.
Exactly. We'll still bid out the project. This is just for the professional services.
Stay with qualifications or whatever, RFQ, but I have never worked with Buxton, so I don't know what their qualifications are.
So, they are licensed landscaping architects, providing all of that qualification at our November, potential November meeting.
Is that whenever you... So, we'll get a revised contract from y'all, and then we'll agree to that, or...
Client demo kind of outline... If action is taken place here tonight, client demo outlining the revised scope of the project, which includes the work only within the right of accounting, and then the paving and site improvements to the community center with essentially phased out, one phase being linear work and utilities, paving and utilities, and then phase two being landscaping, what's all the community building internal mechanisms are straightaway.
So, can we get more information on the architect? I guess, since I've never worked with him, never heard of him. I think we would want to know who we're going to hire on to support y'all.
Yeah, I think it's good because it keeps... These guys talk every day. It keeps us from...
Yeah, I just want to... Yeah, I just want to make sure we have a good architect, then.
Yeah, I don't think that's been determined completely yet, so.
Yeah, to confirm, they're the landscape architect, not necessarily the building architect.
Yeah.
Okay, so there'd be potentially two architects.
Correct, which wouldn't be through WGA, separate contract altogether.
Okay, that makes sense.
That sound okay, fine.
Part of, part of the architect, or the community building is, is we don't know what we're gonna see until we
Hey, man.
tear it, tear it what's down. There's just no wood roof up there, or some kind of stuff up in that city.
I guess I'm just making, I just wanted to make sure that we vet these people that we're hiring on or have some type of information or background. Like, I know we work with y'all every day, or the city does, and best y'all. Uh, but as far as you supporting y'all's work, I'd like to know what that is, who that is.
Alright, well, in the meantime.
These, uh, just probably answer more of your question, or like the community center itself. These guys are all, the ones that I've got, I've got two of them here so far, uh, that are pre-vetted through the, the governmental co-op. So there is, I have all the information on them.
I guess that's different. So, yeah, we would always like to see that too. But the landscape, I mean, I also didn't, I'd like to see that, who these people are. Or maybe I just need to do the research, I don't know.
Oh.
They, they might have like a standard balls or something that can see that, so whatever. Am I the only one who's concerned about that?
No, you're not. Your, 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 uh, expertise in detail in these areas are what we count on. It's thank God you're here. I'm not kidding, weren't we talking about that earlier?
No, exactly.
I said, we really, I hope Brian's here tonight, cause we really wanted, wanted you to see this. So, yeah, you see.
I can always hit you whatever you want on all of that.
Yeah, Ryan's, he's, cause he's an engineer, he sees things we don't see. We, we see the, we see the lipstick, he sees the inner body working, you know? I mean, it's just, it's, I don't have it in my DNA.
It's for the landscape contract. If you guys, he's y'all's sub. Y'all certified and qualified, so if the issue, it would come back to you guys, cause they're working on a young bro, so.
Correct. We work with them on a number of clients, uh, within the company as well, uh, all around, um, special districts and much. So we're with them quite, quite often, but you don't like providing that qualification.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty standard industry practice. If there's a team together, we usually want to see a quals for all the team. We have trust with WGA, but not necessarily architects.
Yeah, it's nice to have one point of contact, though, where you can get
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we would need a motion then to allow, um, the, the city administrator to terminate the contract, uh, eliminating the redundancy. Uh, can we get a motion?
I have, I have one more question.
Yes.
So that contract, I mean, was that lump sum or something? We're not, are we paying them out, or are we just stopping work and whether we paid, we, or leaving it?
Yeah, based on, uh, I sent it to the attorney just to double check it, but there's nothing in there that says we can't just stop it. They should give us the work that they've done. We don't even know what they've done. All that we've seen is a, a, a little drawing that they had, like, as far as I know, that's all. The contract's actually with Gunda, who doesn't even exist. They just absorbed it through the purchase, so.
So then termination is something, should be too big of a deal.
It's in the letter. I gotta send them a letter saying.
Okay. Well, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we give the city administrator, uh, uh, the approval to terminate, uh, the contract with, uh, Kimley Horn. Adura, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded that we, um, asked the city administrator, are we approved that the city administrator terminated the contract? The existing agreement with the engineering team over at Adura Kimley Horn, uh, is, it is no longer required. It's debatable, amenable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all who oppose. That motion passes. Uh, Mr. City Administrator, you are free to exercise your pen. Next, uh, this is, um, consideration possible action regarding a staff special meeting in November to discuss the, this is item number ten, by the way, uh, to discuss the, uh, budget and expenditure item for the redesigned streetscape project. Uh, the staff is recommending that, that the request for a special November meeting be approved. And, uh, we don't have a, do we have a date on that by any chance? No?
That's why we're asking.
Oh, okay.
To all the work.
Okay.
And to be honest, if we, if I were to do this maybe as a workshop and then a regular meeting, or, you know, so we can maybe all sit down here and have him, you know, go through all the work, we're, you know, some real designers.
I think a workshop would be more appropriate. If we're not gonna have anything.
I don't think there's a lot of decisions to be made at that point. It's more input from everybody here.
Yeah, and then if we needed to do some special meeting, we could, we could always, first or second week in December if we needed to.
Well, just in case there's some action or something that pops up that we need to officially, then we could step into a meeting and then add that. But figuring out the date that works and trying to get off everybody here if we can.
Okay, well.
I know, I know where it is. No, I'm
Everything gets crazy. Yeah, starting in November. Uh, let's see here, um, I mean, Tuesdays are always good. It just, is, Tuesday's not, not good for city council, though, some, some Tuesdays are.
We're only having one in November.
When do, when do you think you would have something meaningful to sit down and discuss, or do we even know if that's?
Yeah, so we, I've already, uh, notified our subs, the landscape architect primarily, um, so they're November, some available. Um, obviously after their confirmation from the EDC is what it is. But they do plan on attending and kind of watching for some
Okay.
Um, and provisions.
Well, um, you know, the, uh, the eighteenth is good.
The eighteenth would be our regular MEDC meeting.
But we're not, we're not having a regular MEDC meeting.
More monthly anymore.
Yeah, we voted to go quarterly.
Oh.
So, so, but we're still kind of doing monthly a little bit right now until we can get some of these projects off our plate. Do you, do you think the eighteenth would be okay, since it's our normal regular meeting? If it's for a workshop, would you be okay with that? Is it, is it?
Too late? Nope.
No, no, of course not. Workshop.
Okay, so.
So city council, so city council will see this or something like it on November the tenth at the city council meeting. And then MEDC would have a workshop on the eighteenth. And that a way you would know a little bit more about what city said, yea or nay, or don't do this, do that.
Most of the stuff for the city part, what's gonna be the interior of the community center for this point? Until we get this project, you know, to an expenditure amount, then we'll take it to the council for approval of the expenditure. But most of this is a MEDC project that you've already started. We just kind of adjusted the scope.
Not, not the community building. Around the community.
On the horse gate.
Is what I'm talking about.
The landscape and all of that.
Yeah, all of that. The city hasn't seen any of that.
Uh, EDC project, we'll design it, get it ready for bid. You guys will give feedback, we'll get it prepared, and then it'll go to council for expenditure.
I think the city council's gonna need to have input
Did you see it?
on the design, so that we don't design it and then they hate it, like that happened with the logo.
Oh, yeah? How about that, Jeff?
Still got PTSD over that.
We won't have anything, you know, concrete until we've gone through the steps, so. I just, I don't have anything to bring, you know, we're ready to.
So what's being presented to, to, to the council?
At first is inside of the community building. That's the first priority.
Okay.
This is just an, it's just a little change of scope on the Macallan project, which you've been working on.
We're more involved with the, with the outside aesthetics and, and, and the groundscapes and stuff like that.
Yes.
And the, and the entertainment value that may come from the extra, uh, accoutrement that we put in and around, okay? Got it.
So the, the workshop gets to the council and I, it's not the design or whatever. They can have, you know, input as far as that.
Right.
We're trying to get to the money part of it, so we know what it costs.
Right, okay.
And, because I like to bring it to them at, at the same time.
Alright, so how's the eighteenth look for everybody?
It's fine.
It's okay? Okay, we're all good with the eighteenth and we don't need a motion for that, do we? No, I don't think so. Okay, uh, then that, uh, the staff is going to recommend that we have a November eighteenth special meeting as a workshop to discuss the, uh, the new project. Do we have a name for this new project? Yeah?
Downtown improvement.
Downtown improvement project? It's the same thing. It's haven't changed, really? Okay, we'll just leave it downtown improvement project. Thank you, thank you.
And I will say that, that we're having a, a little event with council. And I am bringing all of this to them. We're gonna have a little
Power out.
powwow.
Good.
And they'll look at all these things.
Okay.
We're talking about the, you know, the, the downtown development plan, the whole city plan, you know, all of these, how all of this ties into what they've already, you know, put together.
Good, good. So we'll all be on the same page again. That's awesome. Okay, uh, Ms. Mary Ann, uh, you're up. Discussion on the possible, this is item number eleven. Discussion on possible action on the financial report for August twenty-fifth. Alright, Ms. Mary Ann.
Alright, we have the report. Does anybody have a question or something to comment on? Any areas of concern? We will, uh, we will have sales tax revenue slightly higher than what we projected.
So, so Mary Ann, on the, on the fiscal activity, is, uh, the sales tax is eight seventy-seven? We projected eight sixty-five? Is that correct?
We projected eight sixty-five.
Uh, or nine ninety, I guess is, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, nine ninety.
As far as the sales tax itself goes, it's eight sixty-five. We have brought in eight seventy-seven.
Okay.
So at the end of August, we had twelve thousand dollars in surplus uh, over what we had budgeted for sales tax. And after November, we will have September and October and November's receipts will get pushed back through audit.
Okay. How, how, um, how are we trending towards our expectations after depleting the budget with, uh, the CPD? Do we feel, still feel confident that we're gonna be okay?
Uh, I think that we will be okay as far as current year's revenues.
Yes.
We'll be supporting basic operations.
Okay.
As far as these other expenditures we're talking about, definitely talking about reaching into your fund balance to pay for those large product, projects, excuse me. So we'll be looking at, um, you know, potential measures to be able to build that fund balance back up.
Okay, good, okay. But we, but we're okay for now?
Okay.
I love that. That's an easy financial report. So we all need a motion to accept the financial report as presented by Ms. Mary Ann? A motion to accept. Okay, so Dan's made a motion to accept the financial report as presented, uh, do we have a second? Carol's seconded. It's, it's been motioned and seconded. We accept the financial report, uh, for, um, period ending August twenty-twenty-five as presented. Uh, it's amenable, debatable, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose. So the ayes have it. That's been taken care of. Okay, good. Let me just get to the very next.
I want to point out that I put this guy, this in your packet up there.
Yes.
This is not on the agenda or anything. This is just some starting information about economic development, about going Africa. You know, we had a phone call the other day.
Yeah.
You know, businesses are starting to search us out. So I'm starting to put together some information that we can send out to these companies that are looking, you know, what is, what is
Uh, thank you.
what they have to offer.
I got three today, yeah.
I know, they're coming, they're coming.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to put this together and I'll bring it to you. If you guys have any, you know, input on this, feel free.
I wasn't sure where it was. Okay, got it.
This is for you to take home. Just read it.
Okay.
It talks about industrial and businesses and people that are coming.
It's kind of like a packet that gives us, gives, that we can send out when people ask the question, hey, what do you guys do?
Fancy, but we can do it as a brochure and put, you know, I, I get put them.
Some photos or whatever in there?
Yeah, yeah, I, I really want it. Because people do ask. And now we've got the, the third parties that are working for these companies, you know, whoever they are, oftentimes they won't tell us who they are. Well, they're open for, you know, this many acres and they're gonna bring in this many employees, but they won't tell us who they are.
Right.
And they don't have this kind of data back that, you know, they can share.
Well, that's, that's awesome, Brent. Thank you for doing it. I kept thinking to myself, we just need a system, which this is a control. So if we could take this system and just hand it out, I don't have to bother you with it, because I really don't know who to send them to, you know? They think, because my name is, got a title on it, I, I know something.
And that's all we want to do. We want to prepare something that you can, we can send out to, you know, people that are requesting that.
Right, yeah. Well, it's, it's much clearer. This, this will be very, very helpful. Thank you for that. Okay, um, the last item, uh, let's see here, discussion of possible action, we did that. Okay, so we are going to adjourn and go into closed session at, uh, six, we'll just call it six forty-five. Uh, Montgomery Development Corporation will meet in closed section pursuant to provisions in chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four Personnel Matters. Economic Development Assistant Director position. Um, okay, so we're gonna adjourn for that, correct? And then we will be back. And then we will be back.
I think you should bring barbecue next time. That's not professional. I can do it.
What's the old saying?
Make you stay these late. They don't give up my son.
My kids reminded me that it's a year and a half.
That makes sense. So it's like, hey.
You're close. Sixteen, seventeen. Yeah, sixteen, seventeen. It's twenty first of July. Twenty six.
You look good. You look better and better all the time. All right, we're back in session at seven, seventeen. Let me get to my notes here. Okay, the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation is reconvening in open session, which at this time, action on the matters discussed in closed section may be considered. We basically had discussion. We don't need to make any decisions right now, correct?
No, no action.
No action, so I'm going to open it up for a board inquiry. Does the board have anything that they would like to add or mention or talk about or discuss or hammer out? No? Okay. Any items to consider for future agendas? Brent? Nothing?
Yeah, if you guys have anything, you know, if you look at the document I gave you or anything for this special meeting, that'll be a good time because we'll kind of hopefully do that roundtable workshop style so we can beat through some, any of those things as we go through the project.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, then, all right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Wow. And you all have taken part. Ryan, Ryan, one being made a motion to adjourn and Carol seconded. It's amenable, debatable, requires majority.
Vote?
Vote, yes. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, opposed, motion. The motion is adjourned at seven, nineteen. Seven, nineteen. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you.